...order, roll call, Mr. Salier.
Here.
Mr. Masias.
Mr. Flotid.
Here.
Mr. Salinas here, and we do have a forum. Dr. Mackey.
President.
Okay. And we're gonna continue the budget discussion that we were doing last week. I think with the last one we did was on the special education coordinator. That we asked about the special ed coordinator.
That's true.
Okay, let me, is this the same thing, Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Okay, let me see if I can find it here.
You pass it.
Oh, yes. Okay. If you go to page two in this colorful. Okay. A stipend increase for adapted physical education teachers. Are these the special ed also, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And we have two teachers?
Yes, yes, we do.
Two teachers?
Actually, they're the ones that do the.
Special Olympics.
Special Olympics.
Okay.
And in the past, they do all the work, everything, but they've never gotten a stipend for it.
Okay, good. Okay, education teacher does three thousand, head coach, and that's the one you'd, oh, I see. I see, okay. And then there was a change, special education parent liaison to professional position from a para position. And what is that?
Right now, the person that's there is a paraprofessional. And she's been working, doing outreach for the parents and doing staff development with the parents. And we would like to move that position to a full-time professional position. It's, it's full-time right now as a para, but make it a professional position.
Did we get a job description for that?
Yes.
We did, we have one, or did we get one?
Yes, it was submitted.
Jackie, did we get it? I'm sorry? Director for.
Director for the PTO.
The folder are the ones from my department.
No, I don't see it in there.
From your department, in there.
No, I just turned in for the ones they asked me to do.
Yeah, it was, it was turned in with the original package.
Is it called a parent, parent student liaison?
A job description we had for those?
What's the one? No.
Special ed parents do it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right here. Yeah, it looks, it looks kinda like this. It went out in the email this morning. Did you send out that email from Ms. Howard? It was attached in that email this morning.
This morning? I don't.
Would you put it on the box, or would it be an email document we pull up? No, no, it's just, it isn't an email, I'll find it.
Was that the special education coordinator, or?
Yeah. No, it was a parent student liaison, special ed.
Okay, this is the first time I've ever seen bachelors or masters. I've, I've never, it's either bachelors, or it's either master, but this one says either, either of. Which one do they actually qualify with?
It depends, either one.
A bachelor?
A bachelor will qualify them, but if they have a master's.
It's okay.
Yes.
Does it affect the bird or the master's?
No.
No, 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 no. That's the first time I've seen or masters. It says be.
Be a smart bachelor or a dumb bachelor.
Yeah. Can you tell me why they have to be covered? I've never, Texas liability insurance coverage?
Why they have the, I'm sorry.
It says that they have to be covered by Texas liability insurance.
Because they drive, sometimes they drive to different sections and take parents to meet the different.
Oh, okay, yeah, that we have to be covered with that, yes.
Yeah, which is specialized meaning, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else had a question, though?
Sure.
Go ahead, sir. They explained that, that's, but go ahead. Jose, what was the one on this special?
Yes, that's, that's correct. And right now, we're, we're contracting out those services, so we're thinking we can hire some internal people, right? And we have, it's, that's for two positions.
We, yes.
But we have some of those positions right now that are vacant because it is very difficult to fill them, but we're trying to.
What is it costing our contract workers?
Annually, you know, annually, we're spending approximately two million dollars annually on all the contract services for special education. It depends, and it's not, depends on how many, how many kiddos they see in a year. It's probably up or down to eighty to ninety thousand dollars per speech pathologist.
Dr. Yelice here.
Okay. The, the question was, how much is it costing to contract speech pathologies? That was the question?
Approximately.
Approximately.
To get one person come in and contract or whatever, what is it costing?
If, if he's over seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay, that's all I need.
So the, I suppose we could do, I would get, I would say.
And it's been open for several years, sir, and that's why I asked the same thing, I said.
So they can make more money over there?
Yeah, and that's, that was one of them, that actually, they finally figured out that I'm not gonna apply for it because eventually they're gonna need them, I make more money from working like that, right, sir? Let the record stand, man. We say they're, joined us. We say they're, we're on this one. You got it somewhere away. Okay, any other one, sir, that you had? Okay.
I would ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Specific to the parent who lands on. By, by noting that, is it just used for the special education department?
Yes, it is.
They prepare, I'm sure. So they're going to service those two populations, parents.
Yes, the special education.
And I know that you include this job, but it's bringing it off.
So the parent liaison, the special education. Do you want it to establish a connection between our parents and our community and, and our school and our special ed. Our parent liaison helps parents with local community and social services. Sometimes parents are hesitant to see social services because they may not know the process, they may not be able to read the application or the sheet. And so that parent liaison helps in that way. And we're trying to have parents' corporate meetings develop areas regarding these abilities and this kind of connection to see what parents think about our special ed programs and everything.
I'm kinda curious to make a quick, thank you, to Dr. Mackey. But our current parents, personally, I'm not too sure on what their, the brand position is created last year, I believe. And I don't know how that position's kind of grown, or what responsibilities.
I don't think we have it, yes.
Well, what happened with that is the physician came in as a paraprofessional. And as a paraprofessional, we had to pay the person hourly. And many of the meetings were after school hours, like, for example, the PTO meetings, attending the PTO meetings, a parent conference that we had. All of that required a lot of work above and beyond the regular eight-to-five job. And so it was very difficult because of the amount of money that we had set aside for that position. And so this year, we tried to move it up to a professional position.
And is that in here as well?
That's the one thirty-six?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. No, this is only for special ed.
Yeah.
For the other position, what we decided to do was incorporate her duties into the people that are already in place. For example, with the parent conference, have it go under our, the professional development, because really, that's what we're doing. And then we'll go ahead and do other forms, for example, any information requested by the superintendent regarding parents, the supervisors at those schools would get that information for you.
My, my train of thought on this would be that naturally, we'd look maybe at that individual doing or heading that type of effort, so that we eliminate segmentation of, of that work. Parents' involvement is across the board, so, you know, we have a special education area that needs that support, but I think all parents do in general. So it, it merits, if I don't know the responsibilities of this individual and so forth, that maybe they can incorporate that work as well. And I don't know if that would mean we would move it to professional, or it may be less than the thirty-six thousand being proposed now for that. And we have somebody collectively that's able to kind of put everything together, like, close to the segment. So I'll be interested in revisiting that, but I took my train of thought.
Come in.
Does Region Twenty have any of these services, you know, as far as, you know, the liaisons part? We're trying to get them, from what I'm hearing is, making the parents more aware of what's going on out there. So I'm wondering if Region Twenty has anybody that we can call on to handle something like that.
And they do. Actually, through this person, we were able to bring in speakers for the parents. And some of the assistant principals, and that's what I said, in some of the schools, the parents are bringing it in and extending it to a group of principals that together, and they bring in a person to talk to the parents about that. We don't have one person that we can call at the region center, but we do go through other agencies like IDRA, who has come out here and talked to our parents about the different positions that we have, or, or the different situations or programs that we have, yes, sir.
What, what kind of turnout do we have for these?
It, it varies. There was one time when most of them were done during the day, most of the parent meetings that we had were done during the day. And it started off with about maybe fifteen, ten, fifteen people. And the last one that we had for this school year, we had about fifty, I wanna say about fifty parents. And then it was recommended that we maybe do it in the evening, because a lot of parents work. So we did do one in the evening, and we only had three parents show up. So the presenter at that time was from IDRA, suggested that he would like to come back, since parents didn't show up, only three parents. He went ahead and came back and did a special session at Kirby with the parents there, and they had a full house.
It, it seems to work out better when it's campus-based, because a parent, it gets the parents there rather than a district event. District events are way harder to get people to come to.
I'd like to come back to the position of special ed.
Before you do that.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm interested in seeing some numbers where we, what we did this year, that maybe we should remain. I really didn't see a lot of impact on it, didn't know how to respond.
And that was probably one of the major reasons why we decided to not propose it. That was one of the things that we took out of budget, because of the meetings that we had. It would have been really.
So we're not funding it with the last year?
We're not funding it, no.
Okay, I'm about to clear on, so in a way that we were eliminating the position.
Yeah, because of the, really, at last year, this last year, she was just getting to meet who the PTO parents were. The second part, the only two major activities that she did was the parent conference and then the parent recognition. Those were really the biggest impact that she had. Other than that, her work dealt mostly with training the parents to be volunteers at the different campuses, and then visiting the campuses during the PTO meetings.
Which are, which are things we've already been accomplishing.
Exactly. And when Ms. Robinson and I talked about it, and we, we thought, okay, so who's gonna do this? We decided, you know what, we'll just go ahead and take that ownership back. If it's professional development, the professional development office will do it. If it's something that they want from the different schools, each supervisor will go ahead and seek that information from the principals and provide it to the board or to Dr. Mackey, whoever's requesting the information.
I apologize if I asked you, but you already answered, but my portion that I heard to addressing Ms. Masias. I would not think if we're gonna try the special ed parent liaison, I think we should try it at the para level before we go try it at the professional level.
We do have a para. We have a para right now, we're trying to.
Go ahead and explain it to her, ma'am, she wasn't here.
We have, we have the para position available right now. We're trying to make it, we're trying to make it a professional level, because in the past, what we, what happened, what we found out happened with the para was that her time was very limited.
I, I heard what you said, that part just.
Right, and so.
I was saying, this is the one you're talking about.
They both work together, the special ed and our regular one did try to work together, and in that meeting where we had about fifty people, special ed was there to also provide answers to the parents that had students that were, you know, that had special ed needs.
So what are the real numbers? How much overtime did we pay that person by having them come in?
We didn't pay that much overtime, Ms. Dare, because one of the things for overtime is that they have to request it ahead of time. And so I pretty much worked with her. I think the only time that, there were maybe three times that we paid overtime for her. And what I told her is that she really had to manage her time, so that we didn't, yes.
I mean, I think part of the job description criteria is, this type of position, if you know you're gonna work a parent, then you need to have a flexible schedule. Of course, you have to be accountable with somebody, you know, not like you just appear if you want, but if you know there's things to do.
But that's what we did, when we knew.
Because I, what I see is, we have some professional positions already, and we're still paying overtime and overtime. So I don't know that that's a solution. I, I'd actually like to see some real numbers to justify why you would need to make it, you understand?
I, I can get them.
It sounds good, but.
One of the things.
It's like the belief, what is when we talk about, we need more believes, because they're getting overtime, well, show me how much overtime they're getting, and then it should balance out. I mean, in a budget plan, that's what we're really gonna do.
All the paraprofessionals have to sign a form.
You said that we have professional people getting overtime?
Or coming down. The professionals take it. You don't know me?
No.
We'll talk about that.
They're not over here, at least I don't know about it.
Okay. I, I wanna put that on the record.
Okay.
No, but, but for the paraprofessional, whenever she would have a meeting that evening, we would work her time, so she came in like at nine, so that she could attend that meeting, and we wouldn't pay overtime. I think there was maybe one or twice where she really had to work for the parent conference, trying to go to the different businesses to get information. That one was a little bit hard to do, but she did keep ours, and we did it on a weekly basis. And both Ms. Roddy and myself kept track of that.
This one I have marked, and I, I'm not confident that we can do that thirty-six thousand at this particular time, or look at the whole picture.
Let's do it next time, let's, with the counselor, that's no problem.
May I ask for clarification, though, just so we get the right thing? Are you wanting those hours on this special ed, or on the regular para?
On this, the one where we have.
That's what I thought, that's not Ms. Roddy, that's different.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, which, we were talking about the paraprofessional that we had for our parent liaison.
You said that we're not having that again.
We're not having that again.
I will do with that.
This one right here, right now, is a parent.
Is a parent.
And.
And we're asking to upgrade it.
To a professional, yes.
To the thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
She could be flexible as a parent.
Well, one of the things that we're asking. One of the reasons that we're asking for this is because we do want her to do more staff development with the parents and some of the paraprofessionals in special education. But also, and, and the biggest thing here is the credibility that she'll have in working with some of the parents.
Well, remember, we already have a position, we have a different partnership, we're paying somebody else, and you get the partnership. It's the district, though. I mean, one, one of the things I've been looking so hard at is money that we're trying to find. I personally feel that we have some overlap, and sometimes in this district, since eighty-seven, I've been here, when people are not doing their job as well as possibly they could, we give them assistance. We hired more people to help them. And perhaps we just need to do more training, more documentation, and, you know, when the money's tight, everybody has to do more with the rest. That's just it.
Just tell us what you want. What would you like us to produce for you for this item? And we'll do.
Unless you can show me where you actually, that you've spent thirty-six thousand dollars.
On overtime or whatever.
The way it is, then I, I say leave it the way it is, you can write her a new job description, you can give her flexible schedule, all that's legal.
Why don't we take the position?
I'm not sure.
Do you know what's there?
You know who the person is?
I don't, so that's fair.
About twenty, whatever a paraprofessional makes, about twenty, twenty-five.
No, they add it.
They're adding.
Are they getting rid of that? No, 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 no.
It's two different, it's two different positions.
But, but no, no, Mr. Salier's correct, that paraprofessional position, from my understanding, is being dissolved, and they're gonna have just a professional position.
Not this, no, 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 no.
Is this special ed, or is this a?
This is special ed.
Oh, not special, no, I'm sorry. The one they're talking about, yeah, this is completely different, special ed, and the other one they're talking about are two different ones.
This one, we have a parent one, and we have a thirty-six.
Correct. Same person.
This person has a degree?
Yes.
Yes, the new one would.
The new one would have a degree.
Yes, sir.
He's saying. Thirty-six total.
That's why I asked for.
No.
But we have a parent right now, no, you don't.
Correct.
For twenty thousand, okay? Is that para position twenty thousand points away, or we're just upgrading it to a professional?
Upgrading it, upgrading it to a professional.
So the upgrade costs sixty thousand dollars.
Thirty-six.
Well, if the parents go away, that minus twenty thousand, just ask that question.
But they counted the twenty already that we're paying, and then they just put it on our budget, the extra.
So it'd be fifty-six thousand for a professional, yes.
So it's a fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Right. And not, not this matters, but just to tell, no, and they're denoted that it's coming out of two-two-four money, and so that means it's coming from a federal grant. So it's not really coming out of our MNO budget.
But, but is this the same special ed money that you told us last budget meeting, that we spend more than they give us?
No, no.
This two-two-four is only for this, and can't be used for anything else?
That's correct. It's only for a special education program, that's for the special education program.
Well, no, I don't, I'm not saying is it only for a special ed catchphrase. If you recall last week.
Right, the money that we're talking about, when we're saying.
How much money, make, make, I'll ask the question to you, be clear.
Sure.
How much money do we get for special ed? How much money do we spend? Is this part of the special ed pot?
It is part of the entire special ed pot.
Okay.
However, when we made a comment to you last meeting, that we were overspending our special ed dollars, we're referring to local and state dollars, not federal dollars. So when we're talking about spending six to eight million dollars in excess in state, it's only referring to the state and local dollars, not these federal dollars.
So why don't we use some of these federal dollars for the six to eight million?
You can, for some positions, but others you cannot.
So this could help us offset some of that six to eight million dollars?
For some positions it could.
All right. I rest my case.
This, this is, this is not something we have to have.
It's not.
It's not, no, it's, it's not, we don't have to have this position. But it's not costing us.
Right.
No.
It is costing us, because what they told us, what they told us last week, 'cause I was like, well, okay, all these, all these special ed positions, that we paid out special ed money, it's not our regular money, then I would have paid with it. But then they said, no, we spend more than what we get.
That's correct.
No, I, I'm the one that brought it up.
Whoever was gonna be.
It was. I said, is it correct that besides the monies that we get for special ed?
That's true.
The district puts in a couple of millions, Dr. Mackey said more than a couple.
What'd he say?
He said three or three million, four million, whatever.
Right.
That's what he said, yes.
It's in that range.
This one has nothing to do with that story.
It does, Mrs. Salinas, because it's still special ed money.
Ms. Dare's line of thinking is exactly right. If you, if you leave fifty thousand dollars in federal dollars, if you're not spending for this position, there's potentially something else, and that's being funded locally, that can be charged to that, to that. An existing expenditure.
That's right. So this, this fifty-six thousand dollars off that overtime?
Yes.
That's what we're gonna use it for. That's what we're leaving. Yes, but if we don't use it for that, then we can take it and use it for other special ed that will alleviate some in the local. Question, and if you were asked, why would we use this money for?
I wasn't gonna ask, because our budget is already so over. I know they'll just change some of the things around and fund it out.
This, this is something that we want, we don't have to, we, I, I don't think, it's, it's, it's not gonna make or break us on this right here, we don't have to do this.
Let me, let me just, let me just say one thing from Mrs. Salier's perspective, to see whether, here. So, Mrs. Salier, when, you know, I was going through all of these additions in special ed, then I wanted to know what the justification was, because we know we have an ever-increasing special ed population.
Is that right, Dr. Masia?
As we identify more and more of our children, then our cost is decreasing. So I wanted to be sure that the positions that we were adding were something that we really needed, and that, you know, they were already, you know, we gotta spend, but it just gotta happen.
Ms. Dare.
Wait, but I didn't want to.
It said won't, but it's not a really a need.
Right, right.
Okay, that, that is a.
But, but you wasn't here, so these pathologists, Elizabeth Spies, I asked about all of them. And what they said is, they were adding positions to stop the contracting. So those are neat.
This is not one.
This is not one. I, I didn't want to, like, not tell them.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you had Mr. Salier over there. He needs that boost. That's a good day. Hey, you see him rubbing on Mr. Salier's shoulder, coming down over there?
Hey, I'm sitting next to him, and that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Masias, can I, can I, for you real quick? I just wanna do something real quick. A little while ago, you said something, and I wanna clarify something. Just because an employee is on the professional pay scale, does not mean that's not entitled to overtime. It depends on the job responsibilities, the Department of Labor has really very specific guidelines you have to use to determine whether a person is exempt or not exempt from their rules. And if the person is a non-exempt employee, even though if they're on the professional pay scale, they can still be not exempt and have to be paid overtime.
Absolutely, I totally agree with you.
I just wanna make sure that.
I'm aware of that, but I recall at a budget meeting, three years ago, the justification was the same way that we're saying now. Well, we're gonna move this person to professional, so that we won't have to pay overtime. So that isn't necessarily what happened.
Right. Not entirely, it works out that way, but not always.
I totally agree with you, that is absolutely the truth.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, y'all need to teach personnel in the army. I have to learn on the job, so sorry.
We're not in the army. Mr. Masias. Mr. Masias.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would've.
I, I went back to, did I miss, Ms. Howard's not here today. She's out. I mean, these are positions, I'm sure she would answer to. The job description last year for the parent physician that we've eliminated, who wrote that job description?
Well, it, it started, just so you know, with the need, because our PD department is one person, and as the district got bigger and bigger, she couldn't do everything. And she was working with the parents. So we asked with a, for a para position, and we were trying to find the best place to put her, we originally recommended adult ed. So, because they have a director, and a director could work, and she does all the adult ed. After the position was approved, and then Ms. Bear will have to pick up this story, it was moved from adult ed under Ms. Bear.
I asked that we move the position from adult ed, because adult ed, the director, Mr. Gonzalez, already has a lot of duties under him. And that particular position would really fall under Title I, and we were paying for it. So I requested that it be placed under Title I. Not that I was looking for additional people, but I really wanted to make sure that we monitored that person closely. And because it was a new person and new to the district, I wanted to make sure that, whatever questions she had, that somebody was available to answer the questions. We had her initially here at the ERC, but what we found out is, if we wanted her to meet with parents, that some of the times, the parents wouldn't come, all the way in here, all the way to the office. So we put her at the J E C C, next to the bilingual department, where the parents come in to register. And we told her, that is a perfect time for you to meet, for new parents coming into the district. And we suggested that she give them a, a goodie bag for welcome to Judson, and she started doing that, and then, I said, she started doing, she was just starting to do, getting to her job.
I, I still have a whole woman commitment for parent liaison, and so I, I will tell you, I was not aware that we were cutting that position, which leads me to my next question about the positions that we're not seeing here, that you've made a decision.
that you've made decisions, administrations made decisions to cut. Have, uh, have we been providing a list of positions that are not going to be cut?
The positions that's not on here?
Well, I don't even know. I didn't even know the parent position was gonna be cut. I, I clearly don't know what's on there or not. So.
The answer's no.
It's going to be helpful.
We haven't provided that, I don't think.
No.
No.
It'd be helpful, because I'm, I'm getting, when I was talking earlier about special ed not duplicating and having a physical license, I'm under the impression here, guys, that we have a parent position. And again, in my opinion, being straight for parent, parent allocation, which is important. So I'm a little frustrated that we, we started off and we kinda failed. And so dollars spent on this effort were failed. Wait, three dollars. Uh, we don't have a return on it. So when, when positions are being recommended, I, I'm thinking we're not seeing enough information to make decisions. And so, ah, no rationale, I think, we're included in these estimated, um, positions as to why they would be beneficial for us. I like rationale to know why. I know we talk about it, but I would be able to study it. I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here. So I wanna know what the rationale is for it, um, so that we know what truly are needs and wants. I mean, Dr. Mc could put it out there perfectly. We don't need it. So then.
No, no, I, I, you know, we can utilize some stuff, but, but you, you asked about Ms. Howard and the rest of them. They didn't make that decision, I made that decision. And I made that decision because that's my job in management, is making personnel decisions. Now, if it's something that you wanna see, then I think you call me and I'll let you know. I'll, I'll, I'll share that, that data with you. But the rationale is here because this is, this is special ed federal money, and the ones that we recommend, we, we have it here.
Well, not all the positions fall under federal dollars.
The blue, the blue, the blue highlights are on the budget.
Yeah.
In the black and white.
Yeah.
So, yes, I'm aware of that. But there are other positions like director of risk management, uh, there's just a lot of positions here that, um, I think would be helpful to even know why we're.
You're saying that we have?
No, we're gonna, we get, we'll get to that.
That's, that's the point of the meeting, if we go over.
That is the point.
That's the point of the meeting. I've, I've been doing it sixteen years. That's the point of the meeting, is to bring it up. Not necessarily we have to do it, but if there's something that I look at, and that's for board members that feels, with the way we feel, then I look at it, and I put a check by it, and that's the direction that I go. Otherwise, otherwise, if y'all would like special ed, we can take all the special ed off and start over. Then if we have a federal problem, then who do we blame? Can't blame me because I'm putting it on there because there is a need. When I sit here and say, well, that's something that we can utilize, we can't, you know, we don't have to. That's, that's what I'm trying to share. I'm just trying to share.
But you say it was a law, not a need.
No, it's not, no, it's, it's.
And I just don't wanna put a description in there either. So if you think it's a need, you just say.
Exactly, we have a position.
I know.
So he's saying it's not a need to be elevated to a professional level. He's not saying.
We have the position, but we don't have to elevate it if y'all don't wanna see that elevated. That's what I was saying.
Well, I, I have to say, and on, on record, I'm just a little embarrassed not to be aware of positions that are being cut. And just being assumed that I would just know because it's not on here. So I wouldn't like that information for the board to have.
Sure. Get, get, get the positions that were, yes.
I remember when we made that list, she did have a side by side.
Yeah.
The right-hand side where those being cut, there were none on there. I don't remember any of them being on.
I think the reason this wasn't on there is because I heard y'all say this was a Title I. And so this would not have been a part of this budget because it was a Title I position, and the Title I decisions are made separately with the site-based decision making.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct.
But there were no cut positions on that right side of the.
From our regular budget.
Here, and she goes deductions from.
Not from regular budgets.
And that's what this is?
Yes.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Let me say, Dare, go ahead.
Okay. Um, this, this will be a little difficult, so, um, Ms. Barra and Dr. Gil, since Ms. Howard is not here. If you recall at our last board meeting, um, I asked about the, um, additional pathologists and, um, and so, um, down, I'm thinking about it, um, I vaguely remember hearing that we never filled all the ones we had.
That's correct.
So if we haven't filled what we had, why are we adding these dollars to the budget? We're trying to balance our budget. Why don't we fill what we have first, and then y'all come back? We amend the budget every quarter and say, hey, we fill those two positions, can you give us another one? Then we can do it, but to put the money aside when we haven't filled the positions we have, this is a little.
Okay, two, two things we do. There's consultant, there's consulting area the money is in, then it's in the personnel. If we put these positions down, we deduct the money from the consultant. So it's the same money. Then that's one thing. That's, that's, that's an idea, one thing. The second thing else is that I've heard this board say many times, don't wait till the year to put this in there. Do it during budget time. So that's why I asked them to put it in there, so we could be upfront, to let you know this is what we're trying to hire. That's, 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 that's the rationale.
Okay. So I think that's good, and I think as a, you know, as a board, we know that we really need two more.
We do.
Et cetera. Um.
Because we're gonna pay for it on the other side if we don't get it.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to having it, I'm just saying, we got two empty slots and we have to fill them.
That's right, that's right, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right about that.
But you've made us aware that this is the need.
That's right, that's right.
So I, you know, I think the way you did it is right, and then I think it's up to us to ask. What about the vacancies that we don't have?
You're right. Dr. Gil, how many vacancies we have in there?
Well, we have, um, originally there were eight, uh, speech pathologists, and so we have five.
Vacancies.
We have five, five filled. So we have three left, we have three to fill. Okay?
And can you, can I?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Can you tell us, um, do you feel that the salary is now sufficient to hire? Or what do you think, um, we as a board could do to assist in filling those positions?
Those positions are very, very competitive because, um, people are, are getting high seventy, eighty thousand dollars out. In the medical field, I've been able to hire two people, and two S L Ps and two S L P As, and I feel very fortunate. You still have people that want to be a part of the school district. And, um, even though they understand that they're going to be making less money in some cases, they still wanna be a part of the school district. And, and I feel very fortunate about the two that we were able, we were able to hire.
So, um, the effort would be ongoing to fill those other three?
Sort of pain points in large.
Yeah, I think I met one of the companies that contracted us, they think we're nice people.
Yeah, I guarantee you, they make a lot of money off of us. They're making tons of money off of us.
Okay, ma'am. Okay, how about the special ed instructional assistance three?
Dr. Gil, do we have to, explain that.
Special ed.
Yes, special ed and instructional assistance.
Three potential five thousand.
Is that ORD, special ed assistance, is that ORD?
Yes.
That's through, through an ORD?
I'm thinking that, I'm wondering if that is the S L P A's position.
No, she has that separate, she has three of those as well on the list.
Yeah, yeah, we have that on there.
I think that was through ORD.
Those were, um, we have, um, some cases where, um, we need to hire a person that works one-on-one with a child, and the child is very, very involved, and so they're.
Is that, is that what I'm asking, is that an ORD? Is it an ORD? We're not just doing it, but it's in the ORD?
Yes.
It's an art decision that the child.
One-on-one attention.
How many of these do we have currently?
Um, we have, right now, um, I don't have any district-wide, uh, assistance. Sometimes what I'm doing is I'm paying part-time, uh, private staff, and then I'm using the full-time assistance to pull up the child while we hire a person. But in some cases, you know, these children are very, very involved and poor, and, uh, poor and, uh, I have a substitute for them.
I know there was one over there at Kirby, the big boy at Kirby that we had to move away from there. And then there was one at Wood Lake Elementary School that we had to, so that's the two that I know.
Jekka has two.
Huh?
Jekka, like young man, has two.
Jekka has two? Because I had to go over there.
District level.
It, it got, these two, we had to get, we had to hire one-on-one for.
When I was at my school, we had a lot in the special ed department of, um, and I don't know their job titles exactly were, but they were teachers that went one-on-one with, with some of the students to their classes, and it was part of their, their ORD.
We're trying to use that.
So this three and seventy-five, that's a tradition. How much do we pay in twenty-five?
Twenty-five each.
I said, can I borrow your fingers?
Hey, uh, how about behavior specialists change from teacher position to specialist position? And are these teachers?
Um, they, they do have teacher certifications, and, um, they are district-wide employees. They provide, uh, behavior support to students with emotional issues. And they provide support to our teachers, our back teachers. Uh, sometimes we have new teachers that come in and they do a lot more mentoring and support. We have some children that are very aggressive physically and verbally. And so they provide assistance to those, uh, particular campuses and classrooms. And so, um, I have two behavior specialists, and they cover the entire district. And they are very, very busy. Um, we spend a lot of time training them, and they do have a specialized skill. And, uh, with the campuses, a lot of our campuses are P P I S campuses. And so they are P P I S coaches as well. So they are trying to change the, the culture and the climate of the school and support that particular model as well, so that everybody is working together to improve classroom management and student management.
What's that?
We see them, we see them as more specialists than teachers, and that is why we would like to change.
So we're removing two teachers from the classroom and making them specialists? Or are they gonna remain on their schools but as specialists?
They're district-wide, they're in my department.
Right.
But they're, uh, right now they're receiving teacher salaries, and we would like to have.
But, but you already have them in your department?
Yes.
Yes, they just wanna up the position to.
To be a specialist like all the other specialists.
And increase the days.
What, what is the purpose of the days? You know, a whole thirty-one days.
Well, the days are important when you have like summer summits. And for example, we're going to have classroom management, uh, training in August before school starts. And so there's a lot of preparation, um, developing modules, training modules that need to be, uh, developed and presented to our students. So there's a lot of training in place.
Either we, either we're gonna pay and train our people to do it, or we're gonna pay for them to go to the region center and do it, or bring people in here to do it. See, with these kids with special, when we have some of our kids with special needs, they have to be handled special. And that's what these coaches are there, giving them the training that they need. And they do it all summer long, they do it during the year, but they do it all summer long. Let me say, for instance, we got a lot of parents that, that sue us in special ed because they want their kids in private facilities. But because we, we in this city of San Antonio, we have one of the best, uh, staff development and facilities for housing the special ed kids. Because they're coming from all over the city to live in Judson because their treatment, they're not getting the treatment in other districts like they're getting here in Judson. And, and plus, we keeping down a number of lawsuits too. Because if you do anything wrong in that special, you remember, all of this is federal. It doesn't go to a state court, all, this is all federal. So our people have to be trained and updated all the time in this department. And that's, that's what they're doing from handling the kid, uh, teachers have to, you know, from handling the kid, uh, from different training and changing kids when they have different problems. There's all kind of things you have to do socially, mentally, physically, that, that we have to stay on top of this all, all the time. And, uh, and, and we've been gearing up for it, they've been doing a good job in, in keeping the, the staff, you know, trained, because guess what? That department is growing. Our special ed department is really growing.
Our behavior needs are growing too.
Hey, um.
Most nine thousand dollars, but, um, I don't know, I kinda, you know, can we, can we compromise? Let's just give them thirty-one days. How much, how long?
It's, it's not thirty-one days, it's, uh, thirty-one days for two people.
So it's only fifteen days.
About fifteen, yes.
Oh, okay, without changes.
You want to do fifteen days apiece?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do fifteen instead of, it is thirty, yeah.
Well, that would be the thirty-one days.
Yeah, fifteen apiece, but that's thirty for two. Fifteen apiece, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
I don't think that's the way it's written. If that's the way that is, then none of the rest of our line is right. That's, that's, that's changing the position from one eighty-five to two sixty.
Right. That's thirty-one days apiece.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm saying we don't wanna do that. We're gonna compromise.
Well, that's why I asked.
That's what I say, Gil, but I'm agreeing with you. We're gonna compromise and say, how about two weeks?
Two oh five.
Would that be enough? I, I wouldn't just say let's change it.
Right, well, that's the opportunity to get.
To tell us, uh.
Miss, Miss, Dr. Gil, will ten or fifteen days be sufficient?
Uh, yes. Of course, I, of course, I want to support our teachers, because I know the order they do.
I know.
They, uh, they train our, uh, teachers and parents on, uh, P P I. They, uh, do a radio work.
What about, what about, what about we cut about fifteen apiece then?
Like two-ten?
Fifteen apiece, let's tell you fifteen apiece, that's two hundred days.
This is still.
Go ahead, sir.
We have two thousand two hundred forty-one special ed students. And they just said we have nine hundred and eighty percent of special ed. I think we should change ourselves and start making it down. And we got, almost ten or somewhere between the special ed and the one about two hundred days.
Well, we got a whole bunch of more, we're talking about, we're not talking about just that one thing.
Yeah. Well, we're just asking, Steve, what, what all is involved with those thirty-one days? You know, I mean.
And we're training, we're training.
Why, why don't, why don't we try to do this, Dr. Gil? Why don't we try the fifteen days? If it's not sufficient, you let us know, and then we'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, 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 I'm lost now. We were going to give them thirty.
Thirty days.
Thirty days each?
Yes. But now we're gonna give them fifteen days apiece.
I don't know whether I can support that.
I didn't think they're gonna die in September, September, two thousand two hundred thirty, nine twenty-eight percent is special ed. And our higher risk is much special ed, and they're gonna die in those thirty days.
So we decided, we decided let's try how many?
Fifteen days.
Instead of, that's half.
Yeah. And if she needs more, we'll come back.
I'm sorry, but I have to tell you, I, my son, who is now thirty-one, so it doesn't matter what y'all think about him. He had one of those people. And if I told you her name, you'd remember, she was out there. She followed him around class to class in the department, but I'm, I'm gonna tell you, she did nothing. She did not help him do anything. Actually, what she did is she told him, you can just get your GED.
Mrs. Dara, that's not it, this is not it.
No, 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 but I'm saying, I'm, I'm special ed at one time.
These are district behavior specialists.
And Dr. Gil has done a phenomenal job of bringing our program up. And so I wanna support all of these other things and focus on the critical ones. You already have two people, we recognize they're going above and beyond, you told us what a good job they're doing, but guess what? I'm also listening to the teachers complain about they're doing a lot as well. So I'm just trying to find a medium where we can kinda give everybody a little something and focus on the big parts of your program. Now, I'm trying to say it's not, and I'm sorry, the nickel and diamonds is the only way we're gonna find this. There's no big pots of money we can take unless y'all wanna vote for me to do away with a job to community aid.
And they bring in a lot of money, so you're gonna take all the revenue with those.
No, but may I just say one thing? I'm trying to stay out of this, but this particular position, if you polled the principals, they would tell you this was the most needed position in all of special ed. This is the behavior specialist. And as we've gotten more and more urban, these people have done amazing helping the campuses with behavior. I mean, it's really huge.
This has nothing to do with the a hundred and eighty-five days. This is over and above.
That's what I was gonna say.
By what she said.
True. This is for summer training and stuff, yes.
Before August, or August, before school starts.
Yes, sir.
And maybe after school is over also to get everything ready. I, uh, I think, uh, maybe we should try two oh five.
That's five, that's five, okay, we'll take it.
No, no, it's, what, twenty days?
Yeah, we'll take it.
Two oh five?
Yeah, we'll take it.
Start at two oh five, is that okay, Mr. Salinger?
We'll take it.
And I agree with you, sir.
We don't have any of that. We have two oh two, two oh two.
We got two oh two, what about two oh two?
Or two oh seven.
Oh, okay, okay, hold on, sir, we've been corrected.
Two oh two, we don't have two oh two.
Two oh two or two oh seven.
Two oh five or two oh seven.
What do you mean, we don't have two oh five? We're gonna use two thirty-one.
No, we were gonna do two sixteen.
We're gonna do two sixteen.
Two sixteen.
Oh.
Those are just our standard calendars, we have a two oh two, we have a two oh seven, two sixteen sixteen.
So, two oh two, that would be seventeen extra days?
That'd be good, we'll take it.
But, Dr. Gil, would that help you?
Two more days.
We'll take it.
All right, I'll give you two days.
No, no, but I, I.
I'll take it somewhere else.
But I agree that if you see things that are, maybe you need the extra days, I'm pretty sure you could come back to Dr. Mackey. Dr. Mackey could come back to us. We go to Jose and say, Jose, we need an amendment.
Yeah, there you go.
Is that the way it works, Jose? Is that okay, Ms. Dara?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then we're gonna do that. Change it to. Okay, the other one, ma'am, finance.
Well, before we move on, I just wanna revisit the special ed. I still have some reservations and I want more discussion about it in regards to the, uh, educational diagnosticians having been moved up to the pay grade four instead of pay grade three where they're currently sitting. Uh, I just received this afternoon, thank you, for sending the job description. Haven't had a chance to really go into, uh, looking at the information, but that's, no, it's, it was an email that was sent in. Uh, but looking at it, now, I like what, uh, what's stated about, uh, helping our teachers. I do notice that the LSSTs are not certified teachers. And so the ex, ex special diagnosticians are certified teachers, which is, uh, important. I think we have multiple utilities for them because of that. Uh, I also understand that LSSTs are not, um, difficult to obtain, that we're not trying to be pushy to find LSSTs, that there's pretty much a, a good, uh, influx of them in our community. So, um, I guess the whole point is it is retention. And so we have, um, currently experienced educational diagnosticians sitting in positions here to, um, to help. But we're not giving them the equal pay grade. And I think San Antonio ISD, when I look, I haven't looked further, but I'm gonna ask that you guys do that more so than I would, because I don't have the time to do that. But they have their staff all in the same pay grade. And so there is no differential. The, the difference is in the salary, that's the difference in terms of what LSSTs, uh, diagnosticians are.
And you were saying move the what?
Move them from pay grade three to pay grade four, which would be along with.
But I thought they explained to us that that has changed.
That has changed.
That's what they, we were talking, am I correct? Dr. Gil? And you're talking about San Antonio ISD, sir. We got fifteen, twenty here for San Antonio. They would know better than anybody else. Well, Dr. Gil, continue, my dear sir. Wonderful.
The educational diagnosticians in San Antonio ISD here will be educational diagnosticians slash teacher specialists.
Okay.
Um, they will, they will not only test, they will also, uh, do the ARDs, chair them, facilitate them. So what they've done is, yes, they're on the same pay scale, but they have additional GEDs.
Well, that's, that's fair enough, I think. Um, I think that if we can make them all part of the team at the same level, we're utilizing their teacher certifications to do that, which I think is smart. Um, and obviously they, they have experience in our district that I do know. So there are wealth of information for our LSSTs. So I think that we probably should be right by them and just put them to pay grade four, which, I'm, I'm gonna go back to that, I hadn't finished my retention thought. We're talking about retaining our experienced teachers. And I don't know if Ms. Elizondo has provided that information that I requested about teacher pay. So I'm just gonna put out what, what my analysis has proven so far. And that you take a teacher's base pay between seven and twelve years, you see an increase of about maybe, I, I have their a hundred and seventy-five dollars in net pay on their base pay between two thousand and ten and eleven to two thousand thirteen and fourteen, which is not a lot of pay. And we're having a high attrition rate, we're losing teachers, I think, in that segment once it's confirmed. And I'm looking to Ms. Elizondo to confirm with that. But if I'm looking at that, uh, I'm seeing that we have a lapse there. So going back to this situation, we have experienced individuals that are certified teachers that I think it's been recommended that they be at the same pay grade on top of everything. So I'm not just talking, but this is them and something that's been discussed. I think HR is typically not so sure in terms of their evaluation and value of these teachers and need to discuss. So that's why I just wanted to put that out there.
I also think that, um, their job description is being provided with.
I think, I think that's right. Yeah, I mean, I think that, I don't, I think the pay grade would just come up with the increase of pay because of pay grade. But again, tell me if I'm wrong, LSSTs still make more than a diagnostician.
They are on a different scale.
Yeah, see, so.
If you look at other, other schools, for, for example, Alamo Heights, they don't have, uh, diagnosticians, they only have LSSTs. So it'll be simple. Um, San Antonio does have both, but again, they changed their job description to, um, add more responsibilities and.
Add, added value purpose.
And Northeast, they have both as well, but they aren't, they aren't like this. The LSSTs are on the fourth and the diagnostician on the third. You have a, a wide variety of people.
But are they doing teaching at Northeast, you know?
Are diags not?
No, I mean, not, but utilizing a certified teacher. Are, you said San Antonio ISD are doing that, they've added.
Well, they're teacher specialists and they're like case managers, they would actually chair ours, prepare the.
Are they doing that at any ISD that you're aware of?
In San Antonio.
But, but at any ISD, Northeast, are they doing that?
No, they're, they're, they're testing.
Well, I like the, I like the SAID here, so just incorporate more of those, so that you get higher value from, from their, exactly.
How many positions do we have?
We have two diagnosticians.
You call one given right now, and then you do the other one, it's working for it?
Well, the, the thing is that, um, a diagnostician, uh, cannot do biological testing and they cannot do anything related to it. So I just put an LSST on any campus in our district and that person can handle any kind of testing, counting as a related service. If I put a diagnostician there, I, they cannot handle the complete level.
So the CED is gone. For what we're doing now, we're.
It's working for us because we have more LSSTs.
So we really should combine, like, the third one that's not certified, do that.
Well, at this time, they all have two diags.
But it works.
The majority of, uh, yeah.
Right, but we could do that because people don't change.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, thank you, Ms. Elizondo, so it's about seventeen dollars difference. So my question to you would be, without calling anybody's name, I don't know their name, but I also want to make sure you don't call it his name. Based on your experience and as a, and as a ISD, the way that they're using the diagnostician's duty and the individuals that are currently holding these positions, if each two people have the same level of experience as the people that you referred to, in other words, if you gave them a new job description, additional duty, would they be able to perform at the same level as those that are in, as they obviously that are doing that?
Yes, they can, yes, and, uh, but it still doesn't, uh, affect that we're not gonna have an LSST wherever they, you know.
You just, you just said, you, you didn't wanna double, double.
Right, but see, what, what I heard was.
But you're gonna have to do that, you, you gotta do that.
What I heard was Howard's theory the other night was that the intent was to fade out the two.
I was gonna answer that question too.
Uh, she's, you were that. So she said the intent was to fade out the two, uh, ed diags we have. And so I'm trying to understand, um, what would be losing if, you know, Supergena decided tomorrow they needed me to diagnostician, what would be the impact? Would you still be able to do what you do and have the amount of experience in that department that you have? Regardless of whether or not they don't have that counseling and that other thing. How, how training are your LSSTs? Because those two ones that we just talked about earlier, we're having a hard time hiring. So I'm, I'm trying to balance that in my mind. We're having a hard time hiring them, even though they can do more. We have two, they can do the majority of the function. Help you understand why we're willing to retain them and make their job description, you know, on a, at a higher level to support anything they say.
Right now, our, our subprime staff, diags and LSSTs are basically doing the same. Um, and so, you know, we don't have a, a dyad in charge of the campus in the sense that they're not running it or anything, they're not facilitating. So basically, our staff is used to doing a second. And so that's their main job. Even though a, a dyad has a teacher certification, that helps you in the report, right? Because they have that perspective. Um, but are they actually doing something different in the sense that, you know, it's not, not really.
So if we, if we were to add that responsibility, that would make added value from this topic of potential increase. But you didn't address the question about could we function without it? And that was something that, again, in the power system, we would probably not refill their position. Um, I'm real sensitive to the whole special ed area and I wanna make sure that we're operating the best way possible. Certainly, we need those positions. If it be a case, then we, we'll need.
I think an LSST should be, uh, all of the such things could be done at campus and could be helping other related services in addition. And, um, and I, I really think that it's.
Even though you're having trouble hiring them?
Right now, we're not having trouble, we used to, that was, that was a problem like years ago. It was very hard to hire LSSTs. And in some ways, it's still as hard because other districts are very competitive.
The, the only way I would see doing something like that is, and having a diagnostician, is not double, double loading. Because when you put a diagnostician there, you gotta put an LSST there. If they can do it without having to do, take care of the schools, without having to take from other personnel, I wouldn't have a problem. But I do have a problem, you have to take other personnel to compensate for what they can't do. That, that, that poses a problem, but if you could put them on a campus and then we don't have to send any other personnel there, then I, I, I could see that on the same level. But I can't see it on the same level when you have to compensate by putting someone else there.
I think that's why I'm confused.
Yeah.
At, are we doing that? Are we sending two?
Well, I think the added value wasn't in that. I do see some reservations with that aspect of it. The added value was having them head up our ARD and taking that certification that they have, that they're empowered to do already, and giving them those additional responsibilities. I'm certain, as you mentioned, it's gonna free up staff that are already dealing with that by them handling it. I think that would be really good to, to, so I, I don't know what you thought on that.
But I, I just, I just, wha, what we trying to utilize is people, Mr. Dara said it a few minutes ago, we hiring people to compensate for what other people can't do. So, but now, it's, it's on the foot where the diagnosticians, yes, they capable, they competent, they can do certain things. However, we have to, uh, supplement them by bringing in an LSST for some other testing that they can't. What's that?
Some of the counseling.
From the counseling and what else? Psychological tests that we gotta, now, two other things, we gotta bring them in that the diagnostician can't do. But if we could find a way to give the diagnostic, diagnosticians some schools, well, we don't have to move other people, then I wouldn't see it be a problem. Because they cur, they carry their own weight. That's, that's the only thing I can see, you know.
Let me clarify, does an LSST need to be with a diagnostician for ARD? Aren't they doing a bunch of things?
They, they do everything.
So right now, they're not doing ARD, right? So they're not leading that charge at the present time, correct? So if, now, how?
Neither, neither one of them, neither one of them.
We have at the campus, the, the principals and the assistant principals are expected to lead the arts.
That's, that's what you want.
That's an expectation that, uh, we have.
So could the, the edu, educational diagnostician support that effort and actually relieve some of that responsibility from our principal and assistant principals?
No, the, the, no, because the assistant principal at the campus, and that's one of the things that I've been talking to the principals about, is that they need to be aware of the resources that they are putting in the districts.
Lose them, I feel, we, we alleviate some of the pressure, we want them engaged, um, but alleviate some of the responsibility of that.
You have to have an administrative president on the AIs.
I can understand that, but I'm sure there's some paperwork.
Whether it's the principal or the vice principal.
Paperwork, things I don't even understand about.
And we just had a meeting about that, Mr. Macias, and in particularly the high schools. What we did is we found out that, um, how they were having the meetings, we worked with each campus to make sure that, um, there was enough time and they could have meetings concurrently. And they do have the assistants there already. And that was one of the positions that was removed from the board, that was the art coordinator, which I think is what, you know, you're asking that we do that. But, uh, about three or four years ago, the board did remove that position, the art coordinator, and expected the assistant principals to do the.
Dr. Gil, is it any way we could utilize, I'm trying to figure out if we did this, any way we could utilize a diagnostician and sign them for the caseload? How many ki, how many, uh, kids?
Well, we're typically assigning about a hundred kids.
Say we sign a hundred kids, and, and that's good for these people here, because when I was principal, we did a hun, we had a hundred, yeah, a hundred and fifty kids. See, that's what I'm saying, we, we really lax on what they supposed to be doing. And that's, that's a hundred kids, that's like a teacher teaching a hundred kids to do that, which should be, I've had them up to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty. And they've had two or three campuses. I didn't have LSST, I had all diagnosticians, and they were able to do that, but LSST had to come in and do theirs too. But what, what I'm thinking is, is any way they can have a campus without using LSST and letting LSST, LSSSP do their own? Could we do that? Okay, I, that's, that's what I was.
Okay? Uh, I see a section there, finance, is not gonna cost anything, I don't know.
Good job, Elizondo.
I, I thought you had a position you had to fill.
Well, we do, no.
You had to go for that position, huh?
Mm-hmm. I thought it was filled.
The one you didn't fill.
It hasn't filled for three years.
We already posted it twice. This last time, we interviewed six people, uh, well, we had appointments for six people. Three of them called and said they were not interested anymore, and the other three, well, not that great, so we're kinda like, back to start one again.
But can I call the eliminated position?
No.
Why?
Because we'll find somebody.
I'd rather eliminate. This is, uh, what was it, sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars?
Okay.
We budgeted seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, I think I might revisit that. And right now, there's no one currently, you're about to start over again, right?
Where about what?
If you want to start over again in the search?
It's posted.
It's posted, yeah.
So that's supposed to be seventy-five there?
Yep.
No.
No, 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 there's nothing there.
That's just already there.
It's already there.
Oh, it's already, okay, 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 okay.
But if we take it out, it would be seventy-five thousand one.
Okay, there's.
That's just my logic, am I correct in that?
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Under, under human resources, they said director of risk management, one position. And the discussion that we had was that this person was needed because of the Obamacare.
That's only, that's, that's only.
Affordable care.
It's, it's known as both. Uh, so, yes, that's, that's one of the reasons, but that's not the only reason. Uh, we have.
We don't have the job description.
Yes?
No, those are mine only.
It's, it's here, it's, it was in the email that went out this morning.
Yeah, those are mine.
I got it, Jackie?
Under what?
Whatever, whatever you all would use emails that during that day, uh, or maybe because you bring Brittany Cottrell to the, you have them on the day.
Okay.
I wanna see, they, they say.
Okay, go ahead, you were gonna tell us why, now that I have it in front of me.
Sure. That program, you know, that, that the risk manager would do is, uh, we, we are self.
What page is it on?
It is on, well, it's on.
Jackie, yeah.
You're talking about the, you're talking about the job description?
There's thirty pages.
Jackie, do you know, Jackie, because I'm sorry, I, I printed it, but mine doesn't have page numbers on it. The job description for the, in the email?
What time in the morning did you send it?
The way.
It's been a bit spent, they changed it a little bit.
Well, risk, risk management, it really encompasses everything. All of that area. Okay, so we have, we're self-funded for workers' compensation. We need somebody to be looking at that program, doing training, make sure that's happening, looking at our losses. Because that is one of the big areas where if we have people having accidents and what have you, it's costing us directly.
Where's the person that we had?
We have a paraprofessional who just files the reports. But they're not responsible, well, and Mr. Christian can probably speak to a little more than I can, that area, because he's been kinda sitting in that area for a little while.
But. Can you not?
Most, most of, most of the work that she does is filing reports, the paperwork part of it. She does communicate with, uh, Thrive Star.
What about your third-party investors?
Works with them, and they do look at the cases with them, um, but like all of the, um, what's, what's the cases when people get fired? Unemployment, she doesn't do any of the unemployment cases.
No, now, she does those personal.
He's sitting in a moment.
And, and she doesn't go out and do training. She doesn't go to the sites and, and work with people. She, you know, everything she passes along to the director. Hey, this is happening here, this is hap- um, I can't, maybe that should be.
Because I recall when we switched carriers, uh, we talked with the carrier about that, and they said they had somebody in their office and they were supposed to, weren't you hearing that, you were? They were supposed to work with us to reduce our.
All he does is manage the case files. That's all he does is manage the case files.
Yeah, I remember him saying that.
All he does is manage case files on that.
They said it. But it actually happened.
But, um, so that's what I'm asking, what's the pay grade level of that person? If you're telling me all someone did was file paperwork, then maybe that pay level is too high.
No, they're not, but.
It's, it's a, it's, it is paperwork, but you've got to know what you're doing. It's like FMA, you know, that kind of thing. You've got to know what you're doing. You've got to know how to react. You've got to know what to put here. You've got to know where to go with it. It's not just somebody that's a clerk that could come in and.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
And do the work. You gotta have that experience, and that's why she was hired, because she had that experience.
It's a paraprofessional position.
Paraprofessional position?
Currently.
Yes, he is paraprofessional.
And it's a five. If it's one of the ones I'm thinking right here that I'm looking at, uh, it's a five. So that their, their midpoint is thirteen ninety-two. Um, that's one of the tasks that they do. Just, that would be one of the things. The overall thing is all the health insurance that we do, our health, dental, all our vision. This person would be over all of that. And that's the way it was structured before. This person is out there looking, talking to our employees, assisting our employees with any kind of issues they have. They're out there working with our broker to make sure that we're trying to get the best deal we can for our employees and their new.
Position we did away with a couple of years.
Yes, when the cut, we did away with it, yes.
Exactly right. And it's also a position that has, we said, y'all should have this position.
I'm not paying anything.
Well, I'm telling you, that's what, and any district, yeah, any district that's our size has these positions, even small, even shirts. Shirts even have a position like that.
We, we had the position and we cut it.
And we cut it.
That's right.
At the time, we had the position. Is it the same pay grade level of what you're asking for now?
Yes, it was a director position.
Yeah.
All directors have the same pay grade?
For, uh, this position, it was, yes.
So, that's what I'm saying. So this figure that we have on here, this solid figure.
Yes.
That's not here.
It's, it's on, well, it's on here.
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, what's.
Okay, eighty thousand. Was what the previous position was?
Wow.
That person was, I don't know exactly how much they were making right off the top of my head. I can look and see. But it was probably up in that area, absolutely. And this includes benefits as well.
Right.
Sure.
And when that position was there, did we have two people in that office who did that?
Yes.
So we just did away with the director position and we kept the two people.
That's correct, yeah.
We kept the two people that were there.
We gave the responsibilities to the executive director of HR and said, you take care of this.
And I put Mr. Kershaw in the office.
Until the bond test, and then this Howard took it back to the hall.
And you go ahead.
And so, in addition to.
So if I look at this, if I, I'm going off the menu and I'm getting over.
Hmm, sure, sure.
Um, that position at the time did not require a bachelor's degree. Is that right?
Oh, you're asking me that. I know the person in the position had a bachelor's degree, now whether or not it was.
They didn't start out with a bachelor's degree.
I don't know if it was required or not.
It wasn't required of it. And then they end up going and getting a bachelor's degree.
Yeah, I mean, it was required.
But when they got the bachelor's, we elevated them.
And when I.
Yeah, we do. We, we did, no, not all of them. Yeah, yeah.
I said at the beginning, and I would just restate, and I, you know, I'm willing to support the beginning of.
What do you want?
Coordinator.
They gotta have sort of experience. I mean, they have to know some stuff.
And I'm gonna continue on, okay? So those are some of the things.
Okay.
The other thing we wanted to do is, it's, that was not part of the initial responsibility, because we want this person to be a true risk manager for the school district. We want it to be over and look at all of our other insurance. We have all the property and casualty, which means all the insurance for the buildings, uh, that we purchase, all the insurance for the liability insurances that we purchase, for our, the board members, for our teachers, for all of that, to manage the entire, anything that has exposure for the school district, that is what risk management's all about, and they need to manage that entire program.
I don't understand why that would be under HR and not.
Right, that was gonna be my next question.
It's a combination. We can't, we're not gonna have two positions, so we only can get one position. So we're either gonna, it doesn't matter, Lane and I work fine, whoever's in that position, I've always worked fine with whoever's been in that position. So it doesn't really matter who it's under, as long as we have somebody that we know that we can go to and say, this is your responsibility. You're gonna be getting, you're gonna be talking to me sometimes, you're gonna be talking to Howard sometimes, but we need to make sure you manage the entire risk for the district.
Why do you think it's gonna be risk management, you know how to be in the business? If you're gonna talk about the insurance, insurance.
I don't have a problem with that.
It's not a, it's not, you know.
Business under.
Yeah, as far as I know, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Yeah, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
Mr. Salio.
Yeah.
You've been thinking too much. Talk to me.
This is part of my, the, uh, the gentleman's position. Uh, we will save the money a lot more. Save the money a lot. We're all kind of saving the bridge of the bank, but you, how much, uh, money?
I tell my listeners to ask about.
You know, we save a ton of money on that. Risk management is one of the positions that will pay for itself.
But see, but Mr. Salio, that's, that's one of the things on my notes for tonight. And the budget, we didn't y'all tell me that, but then y'all never come back and show me proof.
What's that?
I don't want, I don't want to.
Yeah, where, I haven't seen, we hired a managing manager, we said he was gonna save us X dollars, right?
He has been saving.
Wait, wait. We cannot count what he saved us, and we already did, we saw. Can't count. That wasn't, the life retrofit, you already knew about that. You told us about that, Mr. Salio. But we took the money, we hired, how many more positions now, Mr. Salio?
None.
Has he done about somebody?
She had her degree.
He always had.
Still funded through the maintenance program.
He just works for Mr. Raspberry?
Yes, he, or does a lot of work.
Okay, but he told me.
He is still a maintenance person.
Because Mr. Raspberry told me he had a person, and he needed another person.
You might wanna play up, fine.
He talked about that last year.
He's always talking about.
Dr. Mack.
Yeah, he's not getting that one.
Yeah.
But so that's, if you say it's gonna save, now I want you to come back and show me where it's saving. Okay, just, you know, I, I, I might call this slut stuff, but show me the numbers on the paper.
Mr. Derr, that man been up to this board and spoke two or three times, Mr. Raspberry, talked about that.
He's doing a great job, and our employees are the ones.
They what?
They're, they're hot.
And I'm one of them.
Now, he's done a good job.
Okay.
I just wanted to show you the mistake.
Okay, can we move on, please? Operations. Child nutrition. Mister, I believe this department, we talked about it one time, that it was going to involve all the schools.
I think that's a discussion item, because it's not coming out of our budget, it's.
Yeah.
Oh.
You can tell them you can have.
Oh, okay, okay. Police department either.
Thank you, Mr. Derr.
That was a.
That's easy.
Give me the money.
That's easy.
That's the money.
Okay, I believe this is just an upgrade, secretary to secretary slash dispatcher.
She, um, she had to go back to school to get her dispatcher's training, um, so it is an upgrade, because she does have a lot.
She did have, so now she's certified?
Yes. Well, I don't know if it's a certification, but she has had the training. She has to have to be a dispatcher.
But this is a certification.
Okay.
Because they had an opening in line both sides.
Oh. You gonna work now, Mr. Derr?
No.
Okay, all right.
I'll give you that.
When the dispatcher left, she took over the district.
Yeah, she was the first to get that.
I was trying to get a job. I was trying to get a job.
Uh, when we hired Mr. Leescom.
Have to read all this stuff.
When we hired Mr. Leescom, he said he'd save us a lot of money. There it is, ma'am, zero for public information, ma'am. So don't be complaining about him. Yes, sir.
Why, why, why are we, I mean, why are we hiring this officer?
No.
When did we discuss it?
He's not down here.
We haven't put any on there.
There's not one on there. We just talked about it.
There was four.
Yeah, we had a press, we had something about.
Yeah?
We talked about it.
Dr. Zon, we talked about Dr. Zon.
Uh-huh.
The two recommendations, what did you have in mind?
Not now. You know, we're just so tight. We had all that money, and we owed, we'd like one point eight to nine. And told, and then we, we, we helped her, she got a car, and I, I did a little negotiating with her on some thing.
You got a boat?
That's what we.
Huh?
You got a boat?
No. They worked a body fight.
I mean, so, but.
Student.
On that.
That's funny. Bottom of a boat.
One thing I did want to, um, check on the district, um, Salio, was, um, what it would cost us to buy then a set of uniforms.
Set of uniforms.
I kinda had a talk about it, she did that, but they didn't, weren't they able to kind of dispatch?
Yeah.
She worked it out her budget for a part of the last week.
They all uniformed, huh? They got uniform?
Yeah, we were talking about them not having to.
But they have five, she works out of her, aren't they showing you she works out of the budget, right? Yeah, they each, each year, they get extra shirts, and they can bring out, they get some.
And that's fair, that's fair.
That's all I wanted.
That's what you wanted, mm-hmm. Okay. Student ser- services. Clerk attendance office increasing days.
Who is that?
We have a hundred and eighty-five days of attendance. Why do we wanna go to two thirteen? What's, what are they checking on?
It's Joe.
Tell her no, that's.
Who?
It's Mr. Gonzalez. He's not here.
No, I'm, I'm gonna defend that one.
We paid her, oh, 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 we've been paying her overtime every year.
Paying who?
They don't have a secretary there, they should have to finish out those court cases.
And so, right now, we're paying her off sup.
Nancy.
Joe, we're paying her off supplemental pay, and we've done it for several years, and that's when you just need to increase the days, because we're paying her anyway.
Okay.
I remember.
Mr. Macias, technology.
Who?
Yeah.
Well, I did, I did, I did include in the packet, the hand, the folder, Mr.'s, uh, Young's two things should be in there.
Nancy.
Because he wasn't gonna be here, so.
We said that we need a teacher for fourth grade, freshman. That's an automatic, right? If they have the numbers, they get the extra teacher?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
That's true.
And of course, copper field, the STEM, all of those are just.
Yeah, I mean, we just have to show them in the budget.
Yeah, I know.
What?
Did you look at this?
You, you put what in here, man?
Mr. Young's two job descriptions should be inside.
Yeah, maybe.
Oh, yes, 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 technology.
Why do we need another, um, desktop?
Where, where?
Because we increased campus.
Yes, they can't keep up. The number of work orders are.
We reduce some during the budget time? We, we had, we narrowed up two or three of them, um, and this year, we've been contracting out some of them, uh, so, two, two of them.
Yes.
That's cool. And this other one is the one to have a backup for the current position?
Yep, for the financial.
Is the pay grade the same?
Oh, no, no, this is a lot less pay grade. A lot lower pay grade than the current position.
That makes more.
District Mike, Microsoft soccer stipend. I'm sorry, I'm gonna.
Microsoft. I love it. The middle school.
I'm looking for that.
Because we were talking technology.
Mr. Salinas, can, um, can you explain what the one slash two is on principal and assistant principal? What is that? The one slash two on the copper field, I'm trying to figure that out.
Oh, half, half a year, because we've already budgeted half a year for this year.
Half a year. So we just. She's adding this another, this year, it was a half a year of the budget, so next year, it's already existing, she was gonna pay for the other half, so now it's gonna be a full principal instead of a half.
Oh, but we only have to put half, so next, the following year, the full amount will be.
Yeah, but it won't show up as an add. These are additional positions. So she, last year, she was in that position for a half of the year, being paid as a principal.
So we already budgeted for that amount.
So you already budgeted for that, because you had last year, now you're doing, you're gonna catch.
The other part.
So the same way on the teachers, sixteen, we already had, and we're adding sixteen for a total surgery?
Uh, yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay.
Got it right down?
I thought it was three, three new ones.
She didn't have, um.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. She's, no, that's not true either.
No.
She starts with sixteen this year.
No, 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 no. We use sixteen teachers within the district, and then you look at it where it says new.
Mm-hmm.
We have to hire new teachers, thirty.
Yeah.
So why is it only sixteen in that number?
Because we use sixteen teachers in the district. Whenever, whenever the other schools left, lost kids, we took new teacher to the new.
They're gonna take sixteen.
It should be, should be seventeen, seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen, there's gonna be seventeen teachers, seventeen teachers that are currently in the district that are gonna be reallocated to that school.
Instead of sixteen teachers are gonna be reallocated, we're reallocating seventy.
And then we're gonna get sixteen new positions.
Sixteen new.
Oh, okay, that makes thirty-two.
And give them an average salary of what?
Uh, fifty.
Fifty, okay. While we're talking about hiring, um, on the budget, um, you know, when we review our, um, paperwork, um, I just don't understand, uh, when we're looking at hiring people, uh, and I know we're not discriminating because of age or experience, but I don't understand when we hire thirty-year people, um, at the highest salary range. You know, we just did a buyout several years ago to get rid of all those.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
That's right, that's, that's a few years ago.
Fifteen years ago now.
I know, but those students.
It flies.
And, and just, and just, I mean, is, are you talking about teachers, educators?
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, it's, it's teacher coaches in the world.
Okay, well, just so you know, too, I mean, that, but you're right, still up there. We, whenever we bring somebody into the district that is a teacher, we'll maximum twenty-five. That's where we, that's the highest they can go, is twenty-five years of service. We don't put them at like thirty years or thirty-five. We started.
But even if they have thirty, we're not gonna.
Twenty-five.
So the following year would be twenty-six? So, in other words.
They just get a raise if the board gives.
I come in with thirty-seven, but I started twenty-five and worked my way up.
Well, yes, it depends, because if the board gives a raise the next year, they move to whatever the board gives them. Because see, the scales, this is kind of the thing that's kind of a little bit misleading sometimes. The scales do not move from year to year. So when you adopt a scale, it's only for that year. So next year, so right now, if you look at a scale and it says, for instance, twenty-five years of experience at sixty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And you go to twenty-six years of experience, and now it's sixty-five thousand dollars. When that person goes to next school year, if the board says, we're not giving a raise this year, they don't move to the twenty-six years. They stay at the twenty, at the, whatever the twenty-five is, sixty thousand dollars.
Oh. Oh.
The board has to authorize to say, we're gonna give a fifteen hundred dollar raise, then they get a fifteen hundred dollar raise. They don't automatically just go to the next step. It doesn't work that way. It's only that scale for that year.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
And if the board says otherwise.
Except when, seven, between seven and ten.
Well, that's to be confirmed.
To be confirmed, yeah. But what I can't understand, you said they only get a hundred and seventy dollars when they get a two thousand dollar increase?
Well, and that's why.
I know, that's what I can't understand.
That's why I need to confirm it. And I'm glad you brought it, cause I'm not finished with that. So, I mean, I'll give you the council, twenty-ten, uh, we have base pay of forty-seven, six fifty. Um, the next year, it was forty-seven, one hundred. This is going across, right? If the next year is probably forty-seven, two hundred, whatever it is. But there was a decrease in pay in our, in our salary and compensation amount. And then twenty-thirteen, it went back up to forty-seven, fifty. This is just from year eight. So, I mean, I'll see year nine, they get a little more, year ten, but the potential now to receive a hundred and seventy-five to even less than five hundred seems to be there.
No, that's, let me explain, yeah, let me explain, just kind of, cause I kind of just, sorry, just kind of get some real quick.
Well, I, I want to confirm with our, our compensation and salary.
I did, I mean, I have them all right here. And, and I went through it just while we were talking here a minute ago on that one particular one, cause I knew when you were gonna ask about it, I wanted to at least tell you something.
And again, seven, twelve years in that range.
Right. And I just, all I picked was the eight year that you picked here.
Okay.
And so, if I look at the first year, and, and part of this, realize that the way, the years you're looking at are those years that were really bad for the school, for us, because we didn't have any money, the, the district didn't have any money, so they didn't give raises in some of those years. So, what I did for that eight-year person you're talking about, I backed it up two years, just to kind of give an idea.
Base pay.
Right. So, in two thousand and ten, eleven, that teacher, base pay, would have been making forty-seven thousand, six fifty, like you have on your sheet, okay? But I backed it up two years, just to kind of give us a little better, a little, a few more years to look at. So, in nine, ten, they were making forty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars, okay? And I'm gonna give you some.
That's a year seven or year eight?
That was a year seven. See, because what happens is you gotta stair step there, right?
Oh, yeah, I understand.
And in the year part of that, they were, they were at six years of service.
See, but I'm not concerned about the year prior. It's that range now between two thousand and ten, two thousand and fourteen. If you think of snapshots from two thousand and five.
I'll, I'll go, okay, then I'll just stick with what you gave me here. Okay, so.
Let me just say this. The reason why this is important, because what I feel is, is given some validity to this, is that our attrition rate in the district, six-year average or five-year average, is seventeen point seven six. And that's documented in the press news article that showcases all.
That's great, I appreciate that. But there is no validity to this. It's wrong. The numbers are wrong.
I'm like, I need to.
I, I will send it to you, but I'm just telling you these numbers are wrong. So, please don't sit here and say, well, they only got a hundred dollar raise between this and this, because I'm telling you now that they're wrong. Because the board, if you just think logically for a minute, the board last year authorized a fifteen hundred dollar raise.
But that was not pay grade, it was a incentive.
No, 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 no. It was right now, fifteen hundred dollar raise, that's what they got.
Well, for this year, yeah.
No, that's for next school year. Fourteen, fifteen, y'all authorized the fifteen dollar raise, which they haven't received yet. They're going to receive it. For thirteen, fourteen, they also got a fifteen hundred dollar raise.
Right.
For twelve, thirteen, uh, for twelve, thirteen, they got a twelve hundred dollar incentive.
You remember that one in December?
Okay, I'm thinking the fifteen hundred was another incentive and not actual pay raise.
No, no, no.
It had to be the scale.
Correct, correct, correct.
Because when there's an incentive, it doesn't carry on to the next year.
But we'll definitely, but we'll definitely give it to you black and white, so you can look at it, and we can talk about it.
I'd like to see it absolutely, that's my concern.
Uh, by the end of this week, we will have.
Can we get, can we get it to you by Thursday evening?
That's fine. The, the other part of that too, was to see what's the profile of a teacher receiving or district looks like. And my, my guess, again, would be seven, twelve. I could be wrong, it'd be three years.
And that one, we're gonna have to ask Ms. Howard, cause I don't have the information.
We'll, we'll have to get her research data.
Look at that for you.
See what the average year teacher.
Is she out the whole week?
Yeah, she's out the entire week.
And the crunch time here was lucky.
Okay, um, if you noticed on middle school soccer stipend, they were not getting paid for.
No, 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 Mrs. Salina, this whole soccer is new to the district. We're just saying, in order to start this program, this is what we need to start a soccer program in the.
At the middle schools.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. It was in the high school.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 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 okay.
Yeah, we just wanna start a program for soccer. Yeah, this, it's, it's, it's just a big deal, soccer deal here in San Antonio, so we just wanna start a soccer program in the middle school.
And then, okay, I have no problem, but then we go, special ed department chair stipend. Miss, Dr., she's gonna get a stipend for the Johnson High School?
No, 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 no. It's a, a, a department chair position for Johnson High School.
What's fourteen fif- oh, the year fourteen fifteen? Okay, okay, okay.
What we wanna do now?
Because that school has, uh, an unusually high number of special ed students, and so by dividing the, the, the two sections, one of those positions will then move to the new high school.
Uh, I got lost. I'm sorry. Over here says only one.
Only one, yes. We are, we have one already.
Oh, you have one already? That's being already budgeted.
That's already, she's already there.
So, in other word, so we're gonna hire one, and then in two years, they go to the new high school. Are we trying to give them, are we trying to give them experience?
We're trying to get them ready, because they won't, nobody will be over there.
Oh, I understand. Yes, yes.
It's only for that high school, yes.
I, I don't have a problem. I, I just wanted to know. Okay, lead coordinator, B I L E L L stipend. What is B I L? Oh, bilingual.
Yes.
Stipend? Who, who is this?
We have three coordinators.
I know, I know, I know. I'm saying, is there a director or?
Well, instead of adding a director, what I'm asking for is that we make one of the three coordinators a lead and pay him a stipend to do that.
We have three coordinators?
Yes, and there's no one of them in charge, and it's, there needs to be someone.
Like we do at high school with council.
I mean, ideally, we'd, we'd hire a director, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, they want one lead.
Yeah.
Hmm?
They want one lead, because they want one.
You can't.
Thousand dollars, just, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, just give them one, yeah.
So, we don't have a lead coordinator?
No, sir.
So, let me ask you something about the soccer stipend. Now, can this middle school soccer coach be dealing both soccer, around football, and baseball?
They can only get by.
Yeah.
No, that's not.
No, they get more than one, more than one.
We changed that.
They get more than one.
No, we thought, thought we stopped that, no.
Those are we get them.
So, they're, they're gonna get multiple stipends, baseball, basketball.
If they coach that sport, which they can't coach two sports in the same season, they're gonna do one. Now, if, if they, whenever the soccer season is, if they do that in the spring, that mean they can't do track, they can't do anything else. They can only do soccer. And but, but if they, if they're, they coach, they could coach in the fall, football.
That's different.
That's different, that's a different spring.
So, they get a stipend for?
Yes, yes, yes.
Even though there may be overlap, but if they start, even if it's spring, you have to.
But they, they can't do it one at a time. You can't do it one at a time.
That, that wouldn't be able to get to you. Good question.
Mr..
Yes, federal.
Lizondo, how many, um, how many of our coaches get more than one stipend?
I don't know that. We can definitely look it up and tell you, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
All right, let's try it differently. Do any of our coaches get more than one?
Yes, all of them do, all of them do.
Because they, they, they might be an assistant to football, but then they're, they are the head coach for baseball. Is this what, the way I understood it?
Well, it's the same way with our teachers. We have teachers who get multiple.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So, the courts, courts is not any different.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I lost you.
No.
Oh, no, no, I understand. Yes, yes, yes.
Football is track, not baseball.
Right.
You gotta do it in a different season.
Don't they do football and basketball?
Yeah.
I know, I know, I know people that do.
Yeah.
I think so.
It has a little bit of overlap, but we do football and basketball.
Football ends on the seventh of November.
November.
However, basketball starts a week, a, a week early.
Before.
Before then, but, but they, but they cannot start the other sport until they finish that sport that they're doing.
And I don't know about that. Uh, I'd like to talk about STEM.
Go ahead, ma'am, STEM.
Okay, so, in our budget, we have three hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Um, that's, that's a nice beginning figure for these people right here. I'd like to see a printout of all the money we're spending on STEM, whoever has STEM.
This is a different, this, this right here is a grant.
It's.
Uh, this is at the STEM Academy.
You said blue?
No, man.
I got blue right there.
She went back to STEM Academy.
I said the STEM Academy.
Yeah, she went back.
Mrs. Salina went back, didn't you get that from?
Uh, yeah.
I didn't hear.
You weren't gonna say nothing, you were gonna say.
I did, I turned back to it.
I even mentioned it.
Yeah, I did.
I don't remember saying STEM.
Thank you. To the record, right, what I said?
Yeah, she, he did say that. He went through it real quick though. But yeah, but you.
Yeah, I mentioned it, I mentioned it.
I was, I turned back. I know what you meant.
You said, get it.
No need to be long.
Go ahead.
So, um, this Jason Academy figure of three hundred and fifty-six, six hundred is partial. I'd like a sheet showing us all the money we're spending on STEM to include.
To date, to date.
I don't have it, but we have to get it.
You have.
No, no, wait, we'll send it to you, we'll send it.
Yeah, I know you.
Thursday.
To include, to include what you had to spend to renovate, and to include transportation costs, because we've already selected the students. I wanna know totally what STEM is possible.
Okay, we gotta take care of.
Because, you know, Mr. Macias is coming up with all these other things. We, we need to look at this money.
We'll get it to you Thursday.
Okay.
Good man.
The other thing, though, um, budget-wise, this first, my understanding is, um, we painted STEM and we didn't prime, and now we have to repaint?
Really?
Is that correct?
I didn't know about that. I didn't know about that.
So, the way that ties into the budget is, you know, I want us to say, but I don't want us to not do things, um, adequately, or professionally for it to last. We don't wanna waste money. So, if you could get back with me and let me know if that's a true rumor or not.
That's true.
I've never heard of this.
I haven't either.
Yeah, I was, I was told to be painted, and we didn't prime, and the paint's peeling before we can get the kids up.
What do you want to do about it?
She didn't wanna tell you. You said oil baser?
It was brick, wasn't it?
No, no, it's.
The interior.
It's all senior. Which is brick.
Painted my house. But no, really, I gotta call about.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
What do we have on the budget? Are we ready for the first fifth, and are we, are we balanced?
No, we're not gonna be balanced. We're one point eight over. But we, 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 this is a work in progress. About between that, now, and next week, uh.
And if we have, oh, public meeting on the twenty-third, but if we have to, we could do it after the public meeting, if we have to have another budget meeting.
Yeah, but I think that's so deceptive, that's horrible. We had to make that announcement, put it in the paper, that we did.
No, no, I'm sorry, that's not, that's not what he's talking about though. He's saying that if y'all are interested, if y'all desire that, we can have the public hearing, and then just have another, another work session.
Another work session before the twenty-fifth.
But we're still not gonna adopt the twenty-fifth. We're gonna adopt on twenty-fifth. That's already done. That's what we put in the.
Well, that's proposed, adopt.
I'm sorry?
It's proposed, adopt.
Yes, yes.
Right. I mean, you all can do it, you all can do it whenever you like. You can do it on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, because the only thing we put in the paper is a public hearing. The public hearing has to be on twenty-third. That's required. But when you all adopt the budget, it can be any of those days. It's horrible, but you know, I'll tell you what, on the other side of it, this is kind of, just to kind of give you, just what, what we hear from the community in the past.
We're not adopting a budget on the twenty-third.
We're gonna tell the community, this is what we're proposing. And we did that one time, and then one of our board members, who's not here, but we won't call his name, he turned around and zapped us at the last minute with a judicial.
Right, right. But I was just gonna say, what the public, you can, it goes both ways, just, you know, for, we've had a situation when we were doing property rate increases, like we were telling them we're gonna increase the tax rate.
Yeah.
And then we had citizens show up, we had, you know, fifteen, twenty people speak, and then right after that, we were during the meeting and adopted the budget, and it's kind of, they felt like we didn't even pay attention to what they said. So, sometimes it's good to let, have a public hearing, wait a few days, let, you know, in case we have any comment, think about it a little bit, and then adopt it.
So, third.
I have a question about, yeah, we're moving on, but what, um, is our enrollment on STEM perspective due to?
One twenty-five. Oh, one twenty, right?
It was.
It was twenty-five from the middle school.
Yes. What you said was correct.
Yeah.
So, one point five.
But not from the same middle schools.
Correct.
Their choice, that's a first.
Yeah, I know, but that's this.
I think, I think they recognize that, their addressing. I did tour the city council a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, sir. Bring us up to date.
Hey, it's looking great, because a lot of our work going into the program, and I'm excited about it, but I just wanted to confirm that one point five was enrollment, is that a square program?
That's the objective. Yes, sir. It is, I don't know, actually, I'm wrong, but we have to share.
So, you're not getting twenty-five from each school?
No.
No, they did not.
We got that report.
They had one school that they put everybody in that applied, but twenty-five didn't apply.
No, they did not put any in right there.
Well, for the balance, you're right, I was there. You're right, you're right, right. From the balance, and address that for next time.
Let me bring the board up to date. Thursday, we have a regular board meeting. Friday, I mean, Wednesday evening, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, S L I. Uh, Friday night, we have, uh, dinner. Friday night.
No, no, we have board meeting Thursday, but, but some of them that wanna go at five o'clock can go and get some.
Oh, that's the, that's a different one, that's one.
Land burger, and then Friday, Friday we have with Samco.
Right. Saturday, we should finish by twelve, twelve thirty. Friday, uh, presentation by Mr. Raspberry. I believe it's scheduled for one thirty, one forty-five. Uh, Monday.
Doctor Mackey has one on Thursday.
Yeah, we're presenting.
Eleven, eleven, eleven ten.
On Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday, eleven ten.
Can you do the close?
Yeah. Uh.
I'll be joining you for the budget account, for the physical.
I'm sorry?
I said I'll be joining you for the physical.
On Wednesday.
No, yeah, but no, the other thing I was gonna say, oh, Monday is, Monday is a public hearing, unless we feel between now and then that we need to have a, some more information or work more on the budget.
No, no, Thursday night.
Yeah, well, we should know, oh, yeah, we should know by Thursday night. Uh, adoption possibly Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. The reason we also moved it is because hopefully, Mr. LaFoy will be back by next, by the twenty-fifth. Okay, so he'll be okay. That's why we went from the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth, okay. Anything else? Yes, sir.
You forgot tomorrow, we have our tour with Norby to interview.
One o'clock.
For a lot of the market, yeah.
Uh, my wife, they, her operation was at eight thirty. They changed it to twelve thirty, so that's gonna be tight. I'll have to see if we can arrange some other arrangements. But if not, if whoever wants to make it. Uh, what else, Jackie, did I have? Oh, the Bear County Coalition. I think we determined nobody could make it. I know whether you could make it, but I think you have another meeting in the morning or something. It's from eight to twelve, that's the problem.
Was it?
Well, I know they're gonna meet with superintendent.
Right.
I do know that.
Yeah, if Dr. Mackey was gonna go, I would ride along, but I'm not driving to the labor, it would be there at eight o'clock in the morning.
Well, he's got a nice King rent.
We can move camera.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go to that. However, Friday night at the dinner, I'm gonna have a sub for me Friday night at the dinner. Yeah, Dr. Black.
Oh, Dr. Black, okay, yes.
Cause I got my grandson this entire week, and I promised him I'd take him to the range.
No, that's fine.
It's Fri- uh, Friday, I promised I'd take him to the range.
Okay.
But he hasn't, I haven't had him since he started school three or four months ago. So, this, three months ago, this is the first time, three months I've had him. So, I promised him I'd take him to the range.
Okay, that's, that's, that should be no problem. And anything else?
I just wanna know, what, what is the plan? I mean, um, we gave all these dates, but we're below, so is the plan just to put money from the fund out? And then if that's the plan, um, how much of this is personnel?
There are. There is maybe two hundred thousand dollars of personnel. The rest of it is all one-time recurring spend, uh, non-recurring expenditures, like the Wagner Track, the STEM program, um.
I mean, how much of the total budget is gonna be personnel?
Oh, gotcha.
It'll be a hundred seventy thousand.
It'll be.
So, that's the recurrence part of that.
Thursday.
Can we get that to you tomorrow, Mr. Dare?
Thursday.
You can, but you need to get everybody, because we.
Yeah.
And I guess it'll be updated by Tuesday, if we can get that.
Thursday?
Uh, this Thursday, yes, cause if it's gonna be for, well, Thursday or Monday. We'll try to do it by Thursday.
Okay. Okay, okay. Is that okay, sir?
Hey, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, you get that?
I'm sorry. Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah.
What time is it?
Yeah. I'll get it to you.
Yeah.
There, there always is, um, exactly how much, I couldn't tell you right now. Uh, we're still two months into, you know, before we can actually close all the payroll in summer school and all that stuff.
Summer school.
Training.